Please draw up the third year lead.
Pledge of allegiance as reply of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we gather here in mind to ask for your guidance and direction on our meeting for best. City of Chautauqua, thank you for the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We pray for those that are needy and poor and have nothing to eat tonight, but we would provide for them in some way. Please guide us and direct us in your hand.
Amen.
Okay, first up, we've got the agenda. What's any additions or deletions? And we've got the following agenda.
Make motion through the agenda.
Make a motion by any of you who have a question about Justin, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion passes. Minutes from the July fifteenth meeting. Any discussions?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Yes. We've got a motion by Betsy and a second by any of you who have a question about Justin, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion passes. Post? Motion passes.
I'm missing that.
Oh, that's probably still the last.
We don't have it in this one.
Okay. Motion through.
I think I'm just gonna call out Tim Olson, we don't have the document.
Okay.
Third through quarters. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
About the sewer pipe, is that because of the water payment?
I have more, that's our last time, okay?
Betsy, you also have a bond payment too. You also have a bond payment. That's right. Doesn't there also a bond payment? Yeah.
Please sign in, gentlemen. Ladies. We've got a motion by Betsy and a second by any of you who have a question about Justin, all those in favor. Post? Motion passes. And we have a board register. Any discussion? Got a motion by Justin, a second by any of you who have a question about Justin, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to visitors, we've got Mr. Ken Gilbert here, please take the podium. Address the council.
Two things I want to discuss, I want to have some live events. And at the ten o'clock, going to the deal or whatever, that's kind of early anymore really, I mean. I've got a couple, I've got a comedian lined up for October fourth, I've got a band lined up for November one. I've had a new guy, I'm just gonna lend it to some people. You know, in case something were, if I can have them up, letting them out later. Not necessarily really late, later than ten o'clock, I mean, that's. Pretty early.
I'd like them to play the band for the fourth.
Like for special, what they come, like, they're gonna have a special, you guys can arrange it. Midnight?
Well, the band is either gonna be on the east side of the building, is there really getting to the east? Or down, eventually down by the river, with the hill which will bounce along the, so it should really affect it.
What time are you asking for, Tim?
Man, they all vary, I mean. Like during the summer, you know, heck, I think like at nine, quarter to noon, so. Shouldn't really be more than eleven, twelve.
Would you be serving alcohol?
Yes.
I have no problem, I have no problem with it.
I like the comedian, he can, he can be outside, worse than ever, he has a good idea. No, there will be one that'll probably, on the east side of the building, and all the sound will be on the east, so. He's, I guess, probably, he might have problems with the guy in the north, on that curb. Won't anybody, who knows? And somebody there.
What kind of business?
Stanley.
Well, that's, that's his house that he lives around, I don't know about me, but I don't know if someone's renting that or not.
Yeah, I don't know, there's one over there. That would be the only person who'd be close on that side.
Or are you looking about once a month, is that?
I'd like to, something to get some money for a little bit, and, and, I guess, be a penalty this town. Some entertainment, some life, so.
Well, I mean, winter top couch, right? Yeah, I know, stop, I mean, this may be a good start to, yeah, put your business, that's what I'm saying.
So, a little during the first, you know, won't be too bad.
Yep. I agree with that motion, so. Yeah, I like that, that's your, that's your time arrangement, that's fine.
I'll say.
I would just ask that, for each event that you have, that you let the council know.
And we can help out with the time here, whatever. We'll be able to, and it could be put out there somehow.
We can help you out.
On that social media.
So, I got a motion by any of you who have a question about Justin to allow, up to midnight, for the damn restaurant to have outside activities, putting alcohol. And that would only be.
Maybe one week, you know?
I don't wanna limit you to that, that wasn't the goal, but, uh. I think beer is what you're talking about, right? Being an experienced. So, I got that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And you had a second issue?
Yeah, they killed the bills, they're gonna kill me faster than anything in the business. I don't see if there's any help on it, or a way to figure something out. I'm not sure how you go from four thousand to twenty-six thousand gallons of water a month. I run a ready-mix plant that runs electric, non-stable.
I was gonna say, Andy, you went from four thousand a month to twenty-six thousand gallons?
No leak.
No leak?
So, I don't know whether somebody would.
Are we gonna, did we, did we call out here and have them come to the show?
They actually called me, Crystal called me on.
Wait, read it, there's two people in the first row, and I sent it for a read.
Okay. So, we did a reread?
Right.
I'm just not sure if, you know, did you read for a couple months ago? Well, I didn't really pay attention to it until.
Now, you went to check it up there. I know you were out to check it out.
Yeah, we, we just checked it out.
I checked it Sunday, and I checked it today.
And we're, uh. Eight hundred, Sunday, that was.
Eight hundred gallons?
That seemed off high for him, just washing stuff, maybe back. The meter's not running, the zone in the house, well, it's.
So, so we're not saying there's a leak, there's no leak?
The meter's not pending whatsoever, and we're not running water.
Do you have outside spigots?
It's shut off from the inside, no way to turn it. And that's one we're checking, this one we go home, and I can make sure that's filled off, that the air conditioning's filled off, everything's checked down, but, you know. But the, the electric bill, I don't understand, I don't know if it's a problem on my side, or what's going on with you, so I run a ready-mix plant. And I've got three-phase conveyor, they've got three-phase air conditioner, air conditioners, compressor, everything, run all day long. I use fifty, I think fifty-three hundred, I got bills on me. In a month, well, up to, from five twenty to six twenty, I believe it was. And I'll deal with eight hundred bucks. And I use eight, eight thousand something this last month out there, I don't know where the problem is, there's gotta be a problem for it to use that much. We run a ready-mix plant at six o'clock in the morning usually, maybe earlier, depending on the day, so. Six, seven o'clock tonight, five to six each.
Okay, let me tell you where I think we're at. As you know, I asked Justin to come down and talk with you. I've talked with you. You're wanting to split the electricity. We ordered a three-phase meter, which we didn't have, I think Crystal told me it's back, ordered it six months.
Yeah, 'cause it can, it comes later, it comes on the way they came out.
But we do have some old dial type that we can install until it gets high, so we're pulling.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's a way to calibrate them, or check them, or see if they're gone, or, I guess, it's like an undogged amount of electric to use in one month, you know?
That's what we can do for you now, and see if it makes a difference.
Well, yeah, it'd be nice to know if it's on my end, I mean, if it's on my end, I'll take the, you know, the, but, it's just, listen.
Well, these will be different meters, so, I mean, it'll give you something to compare.
Yep, that'll help a bunch.
And as soon as it can get to.
That's the original meter, right?
No, no, no.
Man, Peter, alright.
It's a three-phase meter?
Oh, three-phase meter.
Like I said, we, we talked to Colby, and the next time he's down, he's supposed to come by, and he's, well, it would cost to put about three phases.
Well, I'd like to know if they used, I've been, if somebody tested that thing, if you used it, was that actually on my side? I mean, if I got something holding them in the front, and it costs one month money, I don't, I don't know if that, I tested it, so it's getting. You buy the meters, you put on the tires.
Yeah, you just have to do that, see what's pulling somebody here and after all, on your, on your device.
That's an undogged amount of electric conversion to a ready-mix plant, you know?
Yep.
There you go, I remember. Kilowatts a month, a bunch.
We'll do what we can for it, if they're on that.
We, we can make, we'll see if Colby's way before, see what he's pulling it, which was. Very, very neat situation. Work out.
I'm not gonna argue with you, I just, you're trying to pull it nice.
Yeah.
I understand behind, eight thousand kilowatts, it's a lot.
Yeah. See if we can, see what's pulling it twice, and get more. I mean, it's not gonna tell us whether it's on horse or dish, but.
Okay, thank you for coming, bringing that up.
Thank you. You also got the previous bills for the last restaurant that was running there, correct? We can look that up and see what the previous bills were, and I mean, that would pretty much seem like it would run the same, wouldn't it?
Yep, true.
Depends on what the hours and what's in the previous.
I, I don't understand the law, I don't feel that way.
More days a week, and you said.
Well, we had a problem with.
I don't understand.
On what?
One of the churches here, we're generous, like, people come get water, and then they overtake water. Yeah, we have our, our faucet outside locked, so. Because people was coming, filling five-gallon bucket, and it's out of it.
Wow.
We have some tanks in the back of vehicles going down.
Can, can we have somebody from the city check their water meter?
Can the, can the water meter be changed out, go to different?
Well, now. I went down there today and checked that meter myself. And I've got a, I said, I'm picturing, but, in ten days, they've used fifteen hundred gallons. So, that seems to be on par with what would I would think would be.
Well, that would be forty-five hundred a month.
Right, that's, that's.
And their month before, and their month before was four thousand gallons.
So, I mean, you're on target for what you used to be.
More than.
And the meter, we just keep reading, and so it hasn't changed. The meter evidently isn't a problem.
Play it out for a few months, I would consider him, him, I would reread, I would reread things, and, you know, but.
Hope they're being adjusted, maybe the last one still?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, see what it is next month, and if we're in scope on the thing, let's, let's make adjustments, make that right.
Yeah.
Something.
We'll keep it on.
I'm, I'm sure it's not running out to back twenty-six thousand gallons.
No.
You're gonna see that water.
Yeah.
Unless it's just done for the record.
Yeah, I never did.
That's the line three times.
Okay, moving on, uh, the Reddies with the brush arbor, if we got a flower on that this time?
Yeah, um. We thought that we already came and asked about dates, but I talked to Amy, and apparently that was last year.
That's okay.
Um, we're wanting to use the Detroit Park for the eighteenth through the twenty-first, for our harbor, every year, every year. Of September, and then we could set up the week before, and clear down the week after.
We'll just then, I'll see, make a motion for the brush arbor, please.
Thank you. Okay, I got a motion by any of you who have a question about Justin to allow the week before, the eighteenth through the twenty-first, and the week after, for clear down. For the brush arbor in the east river park, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Go on. Did you have an issue service needed to be recognized?
Yes.
Okay, step to the podium, please. We're gonna add this to the agenda. I don't have.
Are you gonna need a motion on it?
I am.
Okay, make a motion to add.
All posted?
All posted to the agenda.
Okay, I've got a motion by any of you.
Second.
Second by any of you who have a question, add motion to the agenda as a present. All those in favor? Post? Go ahead, Stan.
Uh, I need to add a, or move in a twenty-foot storage container, huge, hundred and sixty square feet, made by twenty. I still haven't been able to start doing the floors in the house, I was thinking, someone's gonna talk about that. Some things, I have to delay things for equipment added, for the, uh, camera trailer. And, you know, move stuff out of my house, I'm gonna have to add some work with. Probably apply the storage container. Just places on my.
We, uh, usually when storage containers, you can come down here and get a building permit or permit.
So, we're on the permit.
Is it an application, or have, have you got an inspection?
This, this still.
Build your, build your demolition permit application.
It'll have to be put out to the council.
Ten days.
I don't know, is that a?
You have to publish it for ten days.
Pardon?
You have to publish it for ten days.
Okay. We can, I can get this looked out, during tomorrow. Like, just when you put a record in, I get that property, which is, uh, yeah. You wanna put that, that issues regarding me, bringing this in my backyard.
Well, we still have to post it, and give that official notification, and comply about it, that's what the building department's really about.
Uh, leave you alone.
Well. And that gives everybody else in the city, and it's not just you. Is it temporary?
No, but we permanently. We're gonna be paying the same dollars for house and job. As far as being, I used to work, I imagine, with.
Okay, you just need to put a marker, post on all four corners, so they go in straight.
No, it's been done.
Okay. Uh, all you only had to do is just turn it into the ladies', and he would take that from there, it doesn't.
I was told by the city office, and I put this need, so it could be posted.
No, that's wrong.
No, that's not, I, that's not, I was telling me, you had to put in an application, we had to publish it for ten days. And then, and then the next, it's completely after that to be.
Right.
Or not.
And you don't necessarily have to be present when we do approve it or disapprove of the evening?
Or you have to be present.
No, we just, we just pay it forward.
Okay. Also, I need an extension on the, do the gravel pad for the camper trailer. So, we may have to stay in that temporarily, in the fact of getting a sewer power of water. That would be, most of the pads would be permanent, for trade to figure, you know? Basically, we've got the middle of my house.
You're gonna do this over the winter?
Uh, I'm gonna try not to do it over the winter, but, get things, prove things down, probably two.
We're really not proponent of moving trailers in and hooking them up beside houses, matter of fact, it probably is against the ordinance. In certain cases, we allow it.
I thought we gave, we, we did send in on, yes, yeah, we gave him, uh, thirty, thirty days. And so, I think what he's trying to say is, he's gonna need an, uh, extension on that.
Okay, when was your initial extension inspired?
Did I just hear you saying the trailer may or may not be permanent?
No, the trailer won't be permanent.
I, that's what I heard, and I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, the trailer won't be permanent, what we're allowing you to do is say that while you do the repairs on your home, the trailer has to go away. Or.
Other people have camper trailers.
Oh, no, no, I don't think that, for living, you can't have the hookups, and the electric, water, and sewer, you know?
Right.
Right.
If just be like.
Right, 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 yeah, just like how normal people usually.
Right, right. It would be a temporary residence, per se, what the house is being.
Well, what we granted you is permission to stay in it while you did repairs on your home. And now that we're exceeding our timeframe, we're gonna have to.
Do I have an extension on the extension?
Extension on the extension now.
It hasn't been moved to a pad yet, it hasn't been lifted yet.
Right, 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 right.
So, basically restart.
Can you tell us what the holdup is?
Well, other properties popped up on the radar that we were looking to find, and. We'll begin to those extended, uh, hundred. Uh, rather quick to start, I was just thinking, throw up the money. Repaying this house instead of buying something else.
Okay, we can, we can do a more restart.
Let's start, sorry.
And then give him the end date. And then come back and see if it's at that. Right? No?
I think it's more expensive.
That's it. Okay.
I'm writing.
Yeah, so you go ahead and say it, however you mean it, a minute.
Well, how, how long do you give a patient?
When was your first extension, how many days?
It was, the first one was an extension that we gave you, I think it was thirty, sixty days.
Sixty, it was sixty. So, September, October, so one more sixty-day extension.
Confirm? Sixty days? Okay.
Do I need, do I need to get a permit to put a culvert in? Uh, like. Like a driver.
Is there one on the property, already?
Uh, just for the driveway from the house.
Correct. Well, the city provides one.
Right, I, I'd be paying for it, and then, do I need a permit, or?
You're talking about, you, you're putting the culvert in?
Yeah.
Where would the water be draining from in two? I don't know your property, so I'm just asking.
I'm over four thirteen plumb. I'm, I center between fourth and third, or fourth and fifth. So, probably created both ways from.
Generally, when an additional culvert would end up, the city workers put the culvert in, and then they charge. Then with the culvert people who rock. And I think that's how we did, technically, that's. Well, yeah, I mean, we don't want everybody just putting in their own.
I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that says they can't.
I don't think that there's anything that says they can't, is that what you said?
That they can't.
I say that, I say there's nothing in the ordinance that says they can't. I say that the city puts in the culvert, and charges for the culvert and the rock.
Do we have any idea what that costs?
I don't know. You'd have to ask the city office, and they'd have to give you. I'm sure it's cheaper than what you can do it for, probably. Or higher, I doubt it.
I got, what, seven hundred, something. Now, you put twenty tons of rock. Put five minutes, built a lot on top of it. Drop off the rest below the rock.
Would you be changing the flow of water direction in, in any way, onto somebody else?
So, what?
As it is right now, my yard does not drain because the existing culverts are locked up. So, I end up with, you know, pretty deep, the water and the culvert.
So, what size of culvert, what size of rock, can they put in that?
Uh, I lose the fourteen and five, twenty tons of rock, uh, inch or less.
And they're gonna do the labor for seven hundred?
Uh, well, by being a dump of rock, I, I have to dig out.
If the ordinance allows it, I'd recommend you do it at seven hundred. We haven't had, that I know of, anybody ask to do their own culvert, I know that the city does, I mean, if they.
Well, I, I didn't know if the city had to do it, or if I had to.
You probably should call that in, uh, or locate it as well.
Right, but I don't know, like I said, I don't, I, I don't know whether they can, or they can't.
How soon do you want to do it?
Uh, in the same time frame, uh, six.
Give, give us the time, I'm gonna check it out.
But, the, the existing culvert, if it's not working properly, then the city needs to fix that too. So.
Would that be my bill, or?
No, I think that would be, it's gotta be on the city, so that's the culvert that they need to have cleaned out.
Can you mark where you're gonna put the culvert?
I, I can mark that on the stages. Over four thirteen plumb.
Good.
We could put in an application to be able to do that, or.
Let us, let us decide whether you can or can't, and then we will, you know, we're gonna have to research that one. I, I'm like, I don't know, I don't know if the city's always done it, but I don't know if they can or can't.
Right, I think there's a problem with your culvert you have, that, well, if they were fixing that one, it would be just easy just to throw another one in. But you could have your own rock.
If you want to have, it is not on my property, it's right next to my property. There's a bad launch, is there, folks?
Yeah, there are, there are a lot of issues with culverts.
Just us?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go on. Okay, we're gonna move on to the city employees. Water bike supervisor, Mike, what you got?
Uh, the only thing I needed some information on is the, it's on the list here on the business, uh, Willow Street, Willow Street, this station, uh, prepared generator. They emailed me a couple times, what do we wanna do on that? We want to do it ourselves, or was we wanting to have them fully go ahead and do it? They gave us a quote.
Is it, so that was a quality out of the building? They came out here?
The one, the second one, they gave us one, they did some repairs, and I told Amy that that was for repairs that had already been done. So, she took care of that one, but they also gave us a quote for some more repairs, because it did not fix the problem.
This was the radiator?
The radiator, yes.
Josh, Josh went, Josh went and looked at it.
Yeah, he did not replace it for me. I didn't know.
I already ordered parts for it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I guess it's being taken care of, I think we got parts on it, I didn't know, now that's just what Zach told me, because, you know, they work together, but, it's just. Maybe you need to follow up on that.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and, uh. Amy's gonna get with you about order and the materials that you and I talked about.
Okay.
And for the council's info, uh. Zach got back with us, said that his bid was good, material cost for this thing, he wasn't gonna target ones. So, that date that we were planning on in September for the riser, uh, replacement, could be as early as fifteenth, middle of August, middle of September now. They're in the order on us, but, I just wanna be prepared that when we take the tire down, and we can do both jobs.
You're gonna let me know, aren't you, Mike, when that happens, so we can be technically prepared for that. I will. So, if these guys, you don't get a lot of notice, they could show up tomorrow and say, hey, we're starting on Thursday, so. Yeah, yeah, I'd just like to, but, this is. I'll let you know when it arrives. Get back.
Okay, the city supervisor is up here, but, we've got a, uh. Okay, the city supervisor is up here, but we've got a, for council's info, we got one of the fairly new John Deere's. Is back over a period, I think, for an alternator replacement. Hopefully, should be, but a little more. Okay, utility group, uh, city treasurer.
I don't have anything.
Patty, court clerk?
I don't have anything, sorry.
Okay, I know you're gonna be busy. City clerk?
I need to request permission to attend the CCM FOA Institute in Wichita. This will be my year three. It's the conference, um, it's October twenty seventh through the twenty ninth. It's four hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then the motel will be, for three nights, it'll be four hundred and five dollars. So I need approval to register for that.
Make a motion.
We got a motion by Ernie, a second by Justin, all those in favor that are allowing Amy to attend the annual conference in Wichita? All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. That's all.
City treasurer?
I don't have anything new, I have prepared all the witnesses' requests, it appeared to be my approval. And I'm waiting to hear from the committee on water. If you want to.
Please do. Okay, we're gonna go around the table. Ernie, what you got?
I just wanted to know if there's a timeframe on they, doing any potholes? Are the guys gonna be doing any potholes?
They work on them today.
Today, okay. That's it, and then there's one, um, Colin and eighth, right there at the corner.
Trailer.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. I know they did, they did Mulberry Street last week, I believe, something like that.
Was that, you didn't tell me they didn't finish that bag off today with the car patch?
Is that bag two or three?
That's three, I believe.
This car patch is great stuff, but it doesn't go as far as you would think. And some of our, our low lying areas encompass the entire width of the street. Because we dug up to lay new lines or whatever, and it's sinking, so. Which brings up another subject that we're gonna be dealing with too here in just a little bit. I wanna kinda dovetail the two together. Might as well talk about it now. The, several months ago, if you guys recall, we decided to, uh, change the ordinance on the park and the street pass in sales tax, and we were dividing it fifty fifty. Before that, I think it was a seventy-five, twenty-five split, something along those lines. For streets and twenty-five percent for parks. The park funded, if you'll look at your, your treasury report, is, is healthy. But the street department really needs more of the sales tax funding right now, as you know, the potholes. And we got winter coming around the corner. So we were wanting to ask the council if you want to progress back to the old seventy-five, twenty-five percent. And that would be an ordinance change back to that.
You wanna, you wanna do that right now?
It's, it's on the agenda to talk about, we could go ahead and do that now.
Okay, make that motion.
So I got a motion by Ernie, in a second, five minutes, you can go ahead and reverse the seventy-five, or fifty fifty on streets and parks, back to seventy-five, twenty-five in favor of streets. All those in favor? Any opposed? So be it. Thank you for that too, I, I think streets really need more money right now. Betsy, what you have?
I've been contacted by several people about the increase that we've been asking permission or counseling on the utility rate. They're unhappy because of the ownership on all these people, so. I know we probably already got that in motion, but I think there must be a time to stop increasing the rates, to figure out what else to do.
That is by ordinance every year, I think automatically, most percentages.
That's why I think I have to set up the.
Yeah. Well, I really didn't wanna get into this this early either, but there's very few alternatives if we can't pay as we go for ourselves. I saw on the news tonight that several Missouri cities are incorporated, are voting on a use tax within the city, and I've talked about this before, where if you're ordering anything online, the city could get an add a percent or a percent and a half or whatever. Just like the state started doing several years ago when you ordered online. And it helps the local businesses too, I suppose. As far as you buy local instead of online. That was another avenue that could be explored, but it had to be a vote in Missouri, I don't know what Kansas, it could be a valid issue.
I pay to, I, when I order anything online, it specifically says state, county, and city.
Yep.
I already pay the city sales tax, that's already in Kansas.
But isn't that just via zip code?
Yeah.
They charge that?
Yeah.
If that's the case, then county shouldn't be getting any of it.
I don't think we get any of it either.
I don't know, that's, I agree, you know, every time I order something, stuff you can't buy locally, you know, they look at your zip code and that's where they nail it. Same space, yeah. But I always, I always agree, the city got some, some twenty-five.
If we're getting revenue, I'm not aware of it.
You guys talked last time about sales tax, and I was surprised how much it was.
Oh, the nine point? They were one of them.
No, they, they had a dollar amount at the last council meeting that they talked about that did came in.
Was that on the streets and, when we were talking about the streets and the parks, the half cent sales tax?
Was that the dollar amount? City sales tax.
Right, that's the half cent, that's what they're talking about, changing, spent a split in fifty, like this month it was four thousand dollars. Two thousand thirty-eight dollars under the park fund and two thousand thirty-eight dollars in.
Right, we had it said before that it went more to streets and what, you know? I think you're talking about other, this is on a lot. Yeah.
But that's just my point, that that's another alternative for revenue.
I know we're probably gonna lose money with my co-op business out, which is shut down. And it just comes to a point where you just can't keep breathing, where all the people aren't happy to pay it. It's elderly people that are on welfare or just demanding social security and just gets harder.
Most of the people that are on welfare, they're being told that those get covered by, uh, other parts.
There's a lot of citizens, there's a lot that don't watch or apply for it.
There's a lot of what?
There's a lot that don't apply for it. Suggesting for them to do, apply for it.
Right.
And as we discussed at the last meeting, we found out that the lesser amount of kilowatts for electricity that you can use, the higher it is per, per kilowatt hour, you start getting a break if you use over a thousand. And that does not help the elderly that live alone and don't use a lot.
Seen another house for sale. I'm in a science.
There's a business, a house of science for sale. So if the scientist went up, all the, all the utility.
Seems like everyone says, sell, sells. Everyone goes, sell, sells. None of them's been setting for them.
That's what we help them pay for.
I, I've helped them.
That's what we help them pay for.
Well, they all been selling. It's, it's not like they're trying to make it all their shit here, they're trying to make it.
I would still hope every city got one of forty and sixty.
That's what everybody thinks we're doing, except for.
Well, they've come up with this, every year. See, that's not the situation there, I mean. Now, I think what's. I have your family driving, there's only two.
Okay. That's all I have. No, no. Linda, what do you have?
Well, are you talking about the streets on eight, just the corner, or are you talking about the trailer house?
Oh, I don't even, I'll go there, I.
No, I was talking about the trailer house.
Yeah, you can bring that.
I, I sent a letter, she didn't pick it up, I'm gonna have Jason try to go deliver it.
Okay, well, they moved, didn't they? I have my, I have. I was gonna say, I didn't, it's all right.
I was like, I saw her car parked behind her.
I was gonna say, if you're talking about the trailer house there on H Street, she parks behind you, you have to go to the back door.
Where's your seat?
I ha, I made the mistake of having my son-in-law go down there in the yard, and she literally let him have it.
Yeah, there's, there's.
And I was doing it because her daughter was in my grandson's class, and I thought they can play out the yard.
Yeah, it was, it's really hot, but.
Yeah, it just let him play, I pretended he didn't want to my habit.
What do, what do you mean by that, she didn't want the lawn mowed?
No, she did not want anybody on her property.
I believe she wanted to answer the door.
No, she won't, she won't, she'll put a note behind there.
Well, I've heard remember why that is, but. That still doesn't relieve her from the.
Right.
The city ordinance. And if we have to go into, which is what we're mainly doing, it's just gonna get built for that. But it's bad, there's a tree there that needs cut down, or if it's dead, and I don't know. And it was, I addressed that with Crystal just this morning, so interesting that they get, that they're digging a house, it's probably, and it gets a lot of visibility too.
That's all I know.
Okay. Justin, what do you have?
Uh, the one thing I had was kind of referring back to the asset sales tax, I talked to you about that. I know we're tied with our hands right now with this thorough project, I don't know if you have any question on that. So we can start doing other business to get this project out of the way, get the smoke testing.
Amy, John?
It's supposed to be tomorrow.
Yeah, the smoke test is, but then what else?
And they're reviewing the, the, yeah, the CCTV footage, and then, then they'll be back and brief us on it.
Okay, good, yeah, cause I had sent a message to Amy and stuff like that, I clean up, offers grants, cause I think one of the things we need to focus on some is on streets. They're horrible. I don't know how else to say it, but they do make a, there are a lot of grants out there for that. One of them was a cost share program, I sent to Amy, it's offered by, anyway. That would be a good way to get this to start going, if we start working on decent, uh, our street funding up. I did talk to the city clerk over in Los Loco about what they're doing in their town. And I'm actually supposed to meet with the city supervisor over there and see if maybe not this year or an upcoming year, if we can do a joint street program with not just them, because they talked about Columbus and making everything, the more we get, because they come from Kansas City is what they use, the more we get, the more. Miles they lay down, the cheaper it's gonna be for us, you know, if we could be in covenants with them, Columbus, something like that, we could be a way of saving us money. We just gotta, we need those, but I was supposed to be with them, well, I was supposed to be with my student, but.
The point is, we gotta get out from under one grant before we can.
Because we can, but I'm ready to see that, that go on that kids do.
We're really close to the end of it, I mean, it's for all practical purposes, BG's pulled out of town, but we were supposed to have a meeting today and they didn't show, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I think they're done. Thank you. Oh, we got a break here, the train's going by. If you haven't met our newest two police officers, we have Officer Devon Amon.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Gracie Mann is our, our lead officer, uh, they're both going to be in training. Devon is, is certified part-time. And Gracie has a dispatcher and some, grew up in an LA family, so she's not foreign to the law, unfortunately.
Thank you, guys. It's nice to meet all you guys and serve for you guys, really appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
And they're glad to be here, we're glad to have them. Okay, in your package, you should have had, uh, something called, I don't think they did this, physical sustainability plan. In a nutshell, you might have noticed, this is to get us out from under the original line for the sewer that was, uh, before the grant was granted. If you'll, uh, look at some of the highlighted areas, basically what they're, this is from the, uh, state, they want us to, they already have a, an account set up for maintenance of the sewer system, but they're asking us to put in basically three hundred thousand dollars for a temporary period for sustainability, which equates to twenty-five hundred dollars a pump. And they're asking me to sign it. I don't know that we knew about this when we originally took the loan out. I'm sure we probably saw it in the papers, but.
What if you don't sign it?
We can't get out of the land with the loan, I guess, that's, that's basically it. So the pen's in your hand.
Pen is in your hand.
Yeah, it is, but I can ask for approval. I would note though, if you, if you read that, there is one, I consider, and everybody that's read it considers it a loophole, that it basically lets us determine, what we can afford to put in there. And it says it'll initially have thirty thousand dollars, which we basically have that in, in, already in the account for, but it says with the annual amount being increased or decreased as determined necessary by the annual review of needs and cost estimates and expenditures. To me, that kinda gives us a loophole. Shane, have you looked over this document?
I haven't, I'm gonna see it.
I'm gonna let you see this, and.
Is it in email?
No, I haven't, I haven't seen it. When do we need that done by Amy?
I need to have it as soon as possible, because I need to be able to pay off that interest. That, this is holding that up so we can double it.
Uh. Wait for it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and table that for Shane's input. But just want you to know, that's what I read the document to say. Please read it for yourselves.
We just, we need to agree to, that we are gonna continue to maintain after we put all this money to the source.
And that's, that's their concern, is that they, they put all the money in, then they won't take care of us. But if you know with the lift station repairs and stuff that we've been doing, we're taking care of it the best we can. Okay, so I'm gonna consider that table.
And is there a motion allowing you to sign it if he understood?
Make a motion.
I have to wait two weeks.
Got a motion by Ernie, second by Linda, allow me to sign it if Shane buys off on it. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, junk vehicle list updated. So we got, we got a couple that have been taken care of, we can move. Although we did, I, I did Crystal and we had to address the other day. I mean, I know this is, I've got multiple, I've tried to say it three times, so I.
I mean, I know to say that, I've got multiple, I've tried to say it three times, aside from. Certified, I'll try to get things all out that.
I noticed we had three on the docket for the court tonight. Did those three share a pattern?
One of them did.
It's Carter.
As far as I'm concerned, this is gonna dovetail with the Kansas State tag ordinance.
We do have, we have another one. There's a shop up on. I guess Plum, it might be Plum. Uh, I don't think, there's not a man who has a house there. He still has all the cars out there, rather than.
Across from the community by the church north of that?
Yeah. Um, I need to figure out.
Right.
Those need to be taken care of by the city as well.
Senator Allen. City animal territory ordinance.
This is the five dollars fee per animal that we had, Shane dropped us, we just need to. No, after, I mean, they approved it, but now they just don't.
Okay, so we can give you a sign?
Yes. Yeah, that was back in June. But he found it with his friends.
That's the one, I'll reiterate, that's the one that we decided to drop the Spain New Year on and, and just charge the straight five dollar fee, and that's also. What kind of spurred the vaccination clinic that we have. For a dollar. So. We just need a ten dollars.
For the first animal, yeah. And ten, um, to make a hundred dollars to that.
Thank you for that. And we wanna do it again. Seemed pretty successful, but I don't know how. On top of that, maybe a little bit. But I guess I need a motion to sign the ordinance.
Maybe a motion.
Motion by Ernie and second by Justin to sign the animal tag ordinance. All those in favor? Close.
You'll sign every other ordinance, yes. They do sign everything.
And the next one is the water tap free ordinance. I'm very nervous. I've prepared an ordinance to be called, I was meeting the committee to put the city to determine exactly what it is. Okay, and we assign that to. Josh, maybe you are here. Okay, so I think that must be an automatic tickle. Uh, just be careful, the two of you never.
Just send me, I sent you a message, Amy, one time, you can see Crystal over that.
No, we spread it, we sent it to.
I sent, I sent a plan on that, on the, on the, was this over the water taps? And the meters at the island?
Oh.
That's what it was.
Oh, the meters?
I think it's, we're not holding responsibility of this, for me.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
If I recall, you sent me that, I don't know, it was CC on a T R N, and basically you were saying should be treated like I liked it.
Yes.
Okay, we'll just go ahead and table that. Okay, employee salary range discussion. Remind me, Chris.
I don't have anything on that. You had said that some employees had expressed interest in that.
Okay. We'll discuss that exactly, because I think that, that may be just a personal issue that end up. Okay, the water street lift station apparently discussed. Josh has pots on order. Propose same thing. Think we're gonna. Back off on that for now until we get some further information. There was a. Another section in the ordinance that was brought to our attention that may conflict. With what we were thinking, so I think I wanna table that one as well.
Like there was a policy, it will not.
A policy, and it kind of contradicts itself. But I will say this, you know, we were kind of in a quandary as, as a governing body on, on what the managing numbers should be to A's line. What an employee should be able to carry forward to the charter and maybe into the next fiscal year, but. All that said. Amy took a, and maybe Crystal involved, I'm not sure who all, maybe Patty too, they decided to do an employee survey and, and find out. What each individual employee for the city thought about carrying forwards at time, and they, they, they had a report on that, but. Until we get this other issue solved, I don't wanna really talk about it, but that's where we're at today. And status of sealed beds on three vehicles, three city vehicles. Know that. Josh was gonna put batteries and get them all, I think, running.
And he sent Zach over with the batteries, but then he did not hear back.
That's funny.
He installed, he told me he changed the, he, I think he said he put batteries in them.
He said he came over here to find sizes that were needed, and then they were going to order, so then they had already ordered and then they just had. That would, you know.
Okay, water tower, water main installation, we've already briefed that. Zach is gonna put in a bed. Going with that bed. No competition on that. Again, that could be as urban now as mid-August. We wanna take and do that job at the same time that Mike takes the tower down for water, for painting. At some point later, we need to make sure we put something in on our Facebook page about conserving. And we do shut it down because they have to run the water plant all the time. There's no storage, so. We'll get into that as quick as they get here, but. We're trying to coordinate those bugbonds repairs at the same time. It might be tricky. It'll be tricky, but we'll see how it goes. And utility rate increase ordinance.
You have some, yeah. Yes.
This is the one you guys approved.
With the amounts that Crystal had in the last.
So I get a motion to approve or disapprove, you can sign that one. Got a motion by Linda, second by Justin, to approve, all those in favor?
I agree.
All opposed? Then I've got one. Opposition. That's, I expect. Motion still passes.
What ordinance number is that?
Nine nine nine.
One thousand, one thousand one, or one thousand?
Were you just testing us?
No, I just felt like that needed to have, at some point in the conversation been mentioned, not just the.
The next four.
Or medicine.
The next four, the next four numbers in line. We're going nine nine nine. So on the table? Thank you. Okay, employee probation. Living on a lot of new limits.
Okay, Rogan. He should be off, Rogan Bruce should be off probation July fifteenth, we just said at the last meeting, so can, I need the approval if you guys want to take him off of that retroactive.
Okay, I'll also let me know that he passed his written C E O and his air break, so basically all he needs is, is the practical line. The plan, since we only have a very few public work spaces, to let him get his windshield time going to the transfer station instead of. Just riding around town. I can only afford to put him in the trash truck.
Is it difficult to give a pay increase, difficult to, but once they get the C E O? I think it was seventy-five cents.
Thirty-five.
Say again?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
But that's a lot, yeah.
So we can do whatever we want. Thirty-five cents seems kind of low, I remember, is that?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
We looked it up.
I've been doing this too long.
I, I just have a question, and I know we've talked about budget and stuff. Has, has the council looked at that the city employees have had a thirty-seven percent pay raise? Since I've been in office and since this has all went on, and that's part of what's going on with the electric. When Lee worked for the city, he was made in fourteen. Now they're making eighteen in the city, and when you figure that out, that's thirty-seven percent, and that's just their wages, that isn't what's paid into papers and everything else.
Right.
County, and I know that comes out of general operating, and we put a lot of that coming, we'd like for it to come.
I'm gonna take the hit on the eighteen. The only way that.
I'm not asking anybody to take a hit on this, that's if you knew it was thirty-seven percent.
Well, I'll explain, when we jump, when we jump after Leveque County raised all that seventeen percent, right off that amount.
And we weren't budgeted for that.
Right, and so we were budgeted for three, when Lee just like stated three percent minimum increases, so that was, that was a big bump there.
We, we had a young man that we wanted to hire. And I've been fortunate enough to be able to sit in on almost all of those jobs. Had a young man that we wanted to hire. But he just couldn't work for what at that time we could offer him, so we came. To a, an agreement that we could, we could bet a little more, and we did, and I'm personally, I'm glad we did, because I think. What we're doing out here is, is picked up tremendously, and there's some leadership factors there, and. I'm not gonna apologize for it, but there's, there's part of the answer anyway. Once you set a baseline like that. It's hard to back up from. But also, I know that.
There's also a ceiling that you can, that you can achieve.
Well, and we're mandated too by the salary range of what, by, I think it's in the ordinances that tells us what we can do, but. Yeah, I don't know, we, we can't hardly get people to work for this kind of money either. Nobody wants to weed you at all. It's a tough job. I don't like doing it either, but you're not gonna find a weed that would do it consistently for that kind of money, you just think.
Okay, so back to the probation for Rogan Bruce.
Yeah, I love you today. Effective July fifteenth. My, my Justin, my Linda, all those in favor? Close, motion passes.
No, Justin's.
Well, that was from.
Does he need to approve this?
Oh. Let me see, is that? Oh, wait. Yeah, we got a building permit. Over here on eleven, otherwise known as the liquor store. Took a bill out of the back. Fifteen by thirty head on. And a tear off, things like. Before we consider this, I like to, I need to make a public statement. Justin went over and the building is already in work, the construction of the add-on. I drove by there. This has happened several times since I've been involved with the city government. These building permits don't give you, when you apply for it, the authority. To go ahead and start work. It has to be approved by the building inspector, and it also gives the public a chance. To debate. And. Somehow or another, that's not being done. So I'm making a public statement here over the court as well.
And it's also on the, the website, right?
She explains it every time.
Every time.
Yep, so we do have the authority to stop the work and. I do not even.
That was written the day before the last conference meeting, and it said it has to be published for ten days.
Well, I don't think the city has any talk here, and I'm just trying to make a public statement, but. You applying for a building permit doesn't give you authority right then and there to go to work on, on whatever the project is, so. This one is not actually approved until the council approves it. And you have to state yourself, so this is basically three people.
First of all, I wasn't checked it too. It, it's not the first time this has happened, like I said. If it was something that was pretty. Pretty janky or something like that, of course, I would, I would mention to everybody, anything like that, it is. It is a legit building, everything like that. It's well-built, it's, it's, it's done right, so I'm not gonna.
And I don't wanna stifle a business in town, but we've got, what's, what's the use of those permits if you're not gonna force it? So with that. Justin is asking for approval by the council.
They get a motion.
I got a motion by Ernie, second by Jessica, all those in favor? All opposed?
Can we do that with free counsel?
I, I don't have to.
The lawyer is.
I don't know how many I take. So we've got all opposed. Motion passes by Mary.
Can maybe you place a sign?
We don't have any.
You don't have that, could you not put something in there?
We have to do it when it's building and moving forward.
Going forward.
Right now, I just want to make a public statement and see if, the next time it happens, where they handle it differently and stop it. I just have to say something.
That might have been a damage, we, I mean, personally, why would you do it?
I remember one incident not too long ago that a forty-foot shed was being brought in on a trailer down Terror Street. And it got stopped in the middle of the road. It was going back where it came from. And all aspects of property needed to do that, and I just say that, now what we got set up.
Is it, it is under nine thousand dollars?
And all the derby cars are free, that's really. Okay, next is the house sales tax, which we've already approved. And ordinance nine nine seven, I remember one backwards. But we already approved it, but this is the one that takes effect. But we already approved it, but this is the one that takes effect the eighteenth of August. And again, I'm gonna reiterate that if you are living in Chautauqua and your house being the Donsa, and you are carrying Oklahoma or out-of-state tags, the P D will be paying you a visit one way or another. I know that there are some people that have concerns about that. But I believe in being fair. And it's not fair to the citizens that play by the rules. And it isn't, it is an ordinance now, will be enforced. I don't need to do any more on that, right?
I just wanted to
Okay, next, we have an employee vacation approval, I think it's from Jason Morgan. I'd be ready to go, aren't I?
We gotta go get my mom, so. I'm bringing Rebecca to explain, she's a citizen, there you go.
And it's for three days?
Yes.
Three days. Motion for four days. I got a motion by Justin, second by Ernie, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Okay, open records, please. We got hit up this week by a establishment on the east coast for a Freedom of Information Act. We don't know who they are, what they want. We know the name of the company, and we know the phone number and the address. They want to know basically everything that we have bought in the last two weeks.
Since, since twenty twenty one.
Four years. By invoice.
That's okay.
And I guess, you know, as, as we've discussed, it's, it's their right to do so, but we also have
No. No.
And what about, well, we, we we, we, we don't have a building in the manner which they specified the request.
Right.
But we have to give it to them if we have them, whatever form we, we hold it. But they've gotta pay us money, and I asked you to give you an estimate of what that is going to cost. And then, sure, they can send a letter back saying, send us six million dollars, and we can process. They'll never send us.
And several, several clubs have got this request.
That, that's We're only not sure if it's a scam or not, but the phone owner is legit to this business name, I can tell you that. However, when we look through our documentation, and we have been down this road before, we don't feel like the fees that we charge are commensurate with what effort is put into this kind of work. And I'll just tell you, and I think you guys have copies of this. The minimum charge of ten dollars for each request. Twenty-five cents per page is what we charge. And then, the hourly wage of the employees that are involved, and how much time they spend doing this. So we, I, we think that we need to raise these charges, that maybe these are a bit outdated. And that's where it would be up to the, to the council to change those figures.
So then, the level we have two pages here, and then
Yes.
And one says thirty-five cents per page versus twenty-five.
Plus the hourly wage of Patty, Patty is our Freedom of Information Officer, and so she, she pulled out R L Ps and then showed you what, what we would like.
So this, this is your request?
Yeah.
This is what you guys want?
We would like to, yes.
Is that enough?
Not really, in my mind, it's
That's what I was inter-. I was thinking that.
We don't, we're not trying to inter-er, but, I mean, Patty spent a lot of time on this last one, a lot of time. And for a quarter of a page, and it's just, that's not
How much is a lot of time? I don't understand that.
Well, most a week.
A week?
Yeah.
Forty hours?
And that is nine hours a day until Friday, and then it was four hours. And it actually bled over into the following week. So it was more than a week's worth, and I had to stop my job of what I do every day in order to fulfill this. And we got twenty-five cents a page.
And we have that in here, the wage of the employee. Okay, so that's charged.
The other factor that I don't think is really being considered is what it does to that multi-thousand dollar printer setting over there running these pages. If you wanna raise it higher than that, Ernie, this, this
I'd double it.
You'd double it?
I, I would double it. I would double it times two. If they want it, they can pay for it.
We have to give them a reasonable estimate of what our expense will be provided. And normally, yours is done, no, it's ever extended.
Right, and then it shuts down?
Yeah, that kills it.
I like that.
We thought that was fair, we thought we'd call it.
Well, if you're, if you're shutting down an office to, to prepare a paper, that's, that's, that's a lot more than just your wage.
Why is it interfering with the function of the city?
Right, and that's, and that's, and that's probably the whole want out of it.
Who knows who these people are ready to do this? But I'd hate to see anybody send them money.
The other thing that I don't think is being considered is is the number of employees that we have versus a large corporation. They would send it to an admin pool and have some minimum wage person do this work, I would say. We're taking
Or interns?
Yeah, something like that, we're taking the only employee we've got for the, the cord and the payroll and having them do a piece of the work, and basically, these people probably just throw this stuff in the trash.
And one thing I, I know that it's gonna sell yourself, it'll sell yourself low.
So need a motion to change and want that dollar figure to be in your mind. Would basically from twenty-five cents to thirty-five is what the recommendation was, and of course, pay it down. We never did address paying the employees wages on it.
Right, that's what she said.
In making, we charge twenty-five dollars an hour for research. I mean, and that's a front fee that we give them an estimate, and we go over.
So that, that's more than
Yeah.
More than
And an hour's wage.
What would the, what would the person doing the research be paid an hour at the bank?
Well, they're all on salary, so that doesn't really matter that far, but we, we think that we're being pulled away, I mean, we get a lost key as a long time.
Right, right, right.
So that's what we charge, is twenty-five dollars an hour, and I mean, we've done that for probably fifteen, twenty years.
So you still, so you think that's low now?
Very low.
That's what I was thinking, if it was fifty bucks an hour. Maybe it was fifty.
Dollar a page.
Fifty bucks an hour, a dollar a page.
I mean, because our twenty-five dollar an hour fee has been there for years, and I just don't have much time at least to spend researching, and a lot of it's on computer, we don't have to actually go and find the paper copies in print, and
Right.
but it still is very time-consuming and costly, when you go figure how much these printers are costing. You know, thirty-five cents is very cheap, of what the, it's doing to your copier.
We also have to consider that a local citizen that came in for an, for a Freedom of Information request would get charged the same amount.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't wanna do that to our own citizens.
Are they like the big corporations, though, is it gonna be like five hundred pages or?
That last one was
I would hate, I would hate to put a page number on how many invoices we've done over the last four years, but I think that a week of time is probably low to research on that. But did you make a motion that they're
They didn't just get what they asked for, I don't know what else.
Well, I think we should split the difference a little bit.
Okay.
Five and a half.
Ready, Bill? You know me.
Is it a time and a half?
And how much per page?
Fifty-six.
Try a motion.
I'm gonna
Time and a half, the employee wage, time and a half, right? Plus fifty cents per page. Oh, thank you. I don't think, just then you're gonna say, what employee? If you're doing that.
Whichever one it takes, it does it, and, and on top of that, that gives us if this is in the future and they get a pay raise, then it's gonna cost them more, time and a half too. It, it kinda goes with inflation.
Is there anything in the ordinances, because I know for medical, there's a statute that says what we can charge for medical records. It's so much a page and so much an hour. So I'm just wondering, since it is public information that the publics can get, because from what I'm seeing, they don't want it to look like they're trying to end their people from getting information that's public, so I'm just wondering, since medical's in the statute, is there anything in the Kansas statutes?
I know of nothing in the Kansas statute regarding the cost for that you can request. It's my understanding you simply do your best calculations to what it's going to cost you. And write back to them and say, our estimation cost is this much, if you desire to work, please forward a check.
So they can charge time and a half, even if that's not what they're paying the employee?
I think we can, because it's interfering with the government, and it, it stops you from regular work to comply on it. So, for the time you're ready to work.
And I guess you could argue the point that that individual employee would have to go and do overtime, because they use their forty hours to do their normal job. This was, like you said, hindered, but they may end up doing overtime to get this work, and I've never seen any good Okay, I, I did have a motion and a second. Okay, who had the motion?
Justin.
Justin. Justin, I got a motion by Justin, the second by Linda on the floor. All those in favor to, hold on. To raise it, to time and a half of the employee that brought, and fifty cents a page. See all?
Yeah.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. We'll do it, see if we get Here we go, all right. Okay, last, I'll need your business, we have first responders, second quarter. Okay, they ran eight in April, nine in May, nine in June, a total of twenty-six. At twenty dollars a round, it's five hundred and twenty dollars. Take. Motion by Linda, second by Ernie, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. One thing I wanna discuss, and I've been wanting to do this for several meetings, and we just ran so long. On your painting items on the back of your agenda, we've been carrying this combination resolution on fifteen oh four for a long, long time, it's been vacated. We need to decide what we're gonna do. Property is overgrown, I understand that there's still items being brought in and dumped there. The house is uninhabitable. Matter of fact, the officer I talked to said he'd never been in anything that bad before. And that probably spans quite a few years. This may even have gone back as far as last administration, I'm not sure, but we've been dealing with this combination quite long time, and we've just been bypassing every meeting.
Recommendation?
I'm not sure exactly how far we got with it, to tell you the truth, it's been so long. Did we know that the property owner is now?
Was it, so, the last thing that Scott reported was he got ahold of the property owner, and they said that they had signed it over, I don't know if you know me, I love this
So that they signed it over, the P R O S, um, the P R O S are claiming that they never got the so much where it's been, whereas, I think fifteen months like this right now.
Yeah.
Is this wrong, or is this in public property?
It's bad, they actually, I tried to get all of them now, finally, I was gonna put a game cam up. Because I've got some other cheese going on there too, people are going in the house, I think there there's some other stuff going on, um, I got work of their job out there, so just with that, they stole, they stole the camera too, I have a lot of camera, I have a lot of game cams, so they didn't turn it off, they were looking at it. So I'll put it in, so I'll be charging So I guess my first name is Mike, I think, regarding that's like a story after the, which is the owner says, the owner on record says that he owns it, or he had the P R O S on it, P R O S say he owns it. And a neighbor has my tribal contact on the property, buy a property, taxes, they just say it to themselves. But they've been in this department, so
Is that a driver, legal owner of four houses? I mean, for legal purposes, would that be a two-year notice?
Whoever is on the present plat of name, as far as we're on those, is the owner. Now, in Kansas, if I want a deed to increase property and I execute that deed, on the date of execution, that deed becomes valid, and that ownership actually changes. But for that person to have their ownership recognized, they have to file a deed. And
And if they don't?
They don't, it's their loss.
It's still
Because how can, how can we know? How can we be intuitive to know whether that deed was ever executed or not, or something?
And this is one of the specific cases that I brought forward when Amy and I went up and talked to the county commissioner. This is not the only property in town we've got this problem with. You know, so-and-so haunted, they died, and inheritance, or another state.
Legally, the, the, the deed is valid upon delivery to the, to the new purchaser, his son. But if they want their interest to be recognized, they need to file a deed.
So what's our next step, is, is where I wanna make a little shift?
I'm gonna go talk to that tomorrow, who hopes to make a request.
I have a program that can save his property assets.
Well, the G I S, we should be able to do that right now. But I think, yeah, we need to try to make contact with the owner, he can talk to me, like, I don't know, if you
I haven't talked.
You did.
And his address?
As he responded to you, when you talked to him.
I have something to put up on. I mean, he has responded back before.
I'm gonna, I'll reach out to him tomorrow or today, see what I can do about taxes.
Okay, with that said, we've got an executive session for non-elected. I'm gonna ask the chief of police I'm gonna ask that the chief of police, council, city attorney, city clerk. No. You can't sit down on it.
I just have three things I need to ask.
Are you on my agenda, ma'am?
No, but I need to be.
Okay, go ahead.
When I went out to Elmore's Park today, um, tonight, one of the alchemists asked me to come out by and I did. And I was at that...
Almish at their, their ballgame thing.
And the farthest picnic table down there by the river, the fish odor, it was so bad, you couldn't stand it. And I said, I, I apologized. I said, I don't know what's going on. And they said that people are dumping their fish over the edge. She said there was two piles of their fish.
Well, so it wasn't on the table, you just smelled it around?
It's just right there at the bank. He said, I mean, the odor, odor was really bad. I don't know if there's anything we can do. But it was pretty embarrassing to think. I mean, it's bad.
I wonder if this is related to the complaint we had here in town?
I don't think so because there were nine alchemists that were camping in that area the other day. For cutting their fish up on the table and I asked them to move their fish. So I'm gonna say there's probably another almish that's like that.
And we're just hoping for the water to rise.
But I don't know what they're gonna, I asked them to move it. They had fishnets all over the ground. I went up there and requested them take their fish and, uh, somewhere else because they had them all underneath the shelter all over the ground. It was, it was a mess. So I, I requested them clean it up the other day when I was out there.
Do we check them for fishing license?
I think we can, yeah. We have to catch them fishing. And if they're fishing into the block in the morning on boat, I'm not real passionate. That's wildlife, I can't, I can't do that. And they're fishing on boat. They're, they're not been told in the water anywhere often and they're all they fish on a boat.
But somebody's leaving fish guts.
Government, if they're not, I can't check their license or have their fish. I can check their license if they have a hole in it.
Does that go for like deer hunting too? I can have the deer, but...
No, that's, that's all wildlife and parks. We don't build any of that there. There are laws and regulations. But, 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 yeah. So, wondering if we should give them a call? I've already contacted them twice. I talked to them last week.
But that is a pretty popular corner there, other campers coming in, so I don't know if there's...
Yeah, we've had nobody there other than, I was there there three days, I think. And it was Friday. It was, the last time I talked to him was two days ago.
It was really, I've seen other campers post pictures with the fish hooked in the trees out there and cleaning them up there on, on the trees around the park. So, on Facebook.
Yeah, we don't have a fish cleaning station at Almish either.
I have a dairy.
A park that was washed down busy the other day. And someone had a hose right from the shoulder house clear over the water hose, clear over the side. And he was using a powder washer and something.
He was cleaning the shed guts off of that concrete on that second, yeah.
But then, they still were smelling, I'm surprised.
No, he was cleaning up, but, yeah, I saw he was using his power washer tools to clean the shed guts off of them, the bay fish.
And we dealt with that situation. It was, the problem was using city water.
Yeah.
After we were raising rates, worried about fish.
Debbie can, is there a pile of fish down there in Elmore's to try to blow up or bring to water?
I don't know. I didn't go ahead and walk over to the edge. I was already vibrating to...
It's probably...
It was bad, it was bad.
I saw it, I'm scared. I'll, I'll look at the morning if you guys need to, I'll give you a call.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, campers we have coming in, but it is kind of embarrassing. We're a parks, it's, it's not bad.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, issue number two?
Is that a cab on the market? No, across the street where that tall grass is?
We contacted Mr.?
Behind the man? No, across the street where maybe you're at, that's all grown up again, makes our main street look bad. Is it okay by the way?
I would suggest a weed eater.
Huh.
We, didn't we contact him twice?
I, I called him. The first time I called him, he said he gets me to take care of it. I think that rang right after that. And then I called again, he gave a control of the message. I have it in my back room.
Just looking back, we're not really important.
I don't know if we can give, can we get a good one?
I don't, I don't know. I'm just asking. Or maybe something about...
You want, they're crossing you there?
No, it's you where people's grass, like they do your house come down, school, etc.
Right.
It's, it's right there on Wainsbury. Cross, cross. Say, here's your rest.
All right. Okay, he wants to move it.
But I'm not gonna say that.
You're not gonna rest, you know, I jump over and move it?
No.
Yeah, because I have to cut the trees down first. And the last thing is, I know we're changing the park fund and all and there is some money in there, but we do have to look at, we pull another piece of park equipment out of the park. And we, if we keep doing that, we're not gonna have the park equipment left. So...
Can we fix that? Yes, we need to manufacture a park. Okay, and if we could take one of the four, it's, one is a shackle that holds a spring?
I, I could build you one.
It just, uh...
You just can't keep taking things out. We're gonna have to start putting some back in.
Right.
Hold on, this, tier congress is out on the city building.
That's the one. It was, it was a safety issue.
Yeah.
During July four, so we just pulled it instead of trying to...
Oh, no, there, there was one out there when I got my fire lighter. There used to be a three tiered lighter. And one of them...
I'm sitting in the picture from the park.
Lost the part, so it went slide down, forth on the pole, on the, these are like bolts. Put on there, so the solution was just take it off and put it out on the city building.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, is that it?
I'm done.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we're gonna, I need a motion for executive, not, not like... Got a motion for Justin?
I don't know.
Oh.
Alton, thank you for your statement.
Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Ten minutes.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Justin, second by Betsy, all those in favor? My way, I'll pull up somewhere. Okay, back in session. Regular session. Are there any motions to be made coming out of executives?
I'm gonna motion the, 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 thousand. Get all the applications for the... So, let's get this together.
Shane, do we need to say the number or just that we're gonna have it?
No.
Do we need to say the dollar amount or just that we're hiring him on salary?
Well, I probably get to recognize some of you.
Okay. I got a motion by Ernie, uh, Justin. To hire Jason as police chief going from hourly to salary at seventy-two thousand dollars a year. Do I have a second? Jason?
I'm single.
Okay, second by Betsy. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations. We're also going to be hiring a fifth police officer. That's, that was probably the deal, but that hasn't happened yet, so... That will enable him to be a more effective police chief in our lines rather than pulling a shift on, on patrol.
Probably finish with the down patrol and down there?
Yes, that's not to say that they wouldn't make a, that their, their agreement that we had is done. So... And I would have no comment further than that.
How's your game?
Say, got a motion by Linda, a second by Ernie, all those in favor? All right.